Anna, join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. It's nice to see how popular we are, right? I'm sure it's all for for us, right? Nice to see a good crowd. Apologize for my voice. It got a little cold going. Uh, my name is Andy Hunthausen. I'll be chairing the meeting today to my left Commissioner Tom. Tom Roloff, excuse me. Not sure if it's left or right, or what anybody's name is today. Good morning, Tom. Nadine McCarty will be taking care of us today. Good morning, Nadine. Am I right? Commissioner Candace Payne, good morning. Nico Hash, Deputy County Attorney. And Carrie DeRosa, who is our Director of HR, but she's filling in for Roger Baltz today. And um. There is a sign in sheet in the front as well as agendas. We'd like everyone to sign in, so we have a good record of who's attended our meeting today. And we're gonna start with a special recognition. And I'm gonna call. James up, James Thomas, Director of IT, and he'll get us started here. But good morning, everyone. Very excited about this. James.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairman Hunthausen, Commissioners. Uh, James Thomas, City of Helena and Lewis and Clark County IT Director. And this morning, we're going to recognize one of the IT staff who has been with the county for a full thirty years, plus a couple of months. Uh, Eric started, Eric Wondell. Uh, Eric started with the county back in October of nineteen ninety-four. I was just graduating college. Eric started out taking first-line support calls for the Law Enforcement Center. When the City and County IT Department was formed, Eric jumped on board. And through the years, Eric has become the de facto printer expert throughout the IT community for this organization. I've only had the opportunity to work with Eric for about three years, but I've found Eric to be very dedicated, hardworking, and I'm very appreciative of the knowledge that he's amassed over the thirty years with the organization. Um, I'll keep it brief and I'll let others uh say a few words if they would like to, and then we'll recognize Eric.
Thank you very much. Please, let's roast him, or at least uh say nice, some nice things about him. Who else would like to uh make comment today? Anyone else from the IT world that's worked with Eric for a long time? Please come. Come on down, just introduce yourself and and we'll give him a hard time. No.
I'd love to give him a hard time, but I don't have anything to pick on him about. Uh, I'm Christina Chronic. I'm the um Computer Support Specialist Lead for the Help Desk. Um, I've had the pleasures of working with Eric over the last four years. I started during COVID. And he was um one of the only people that were still left in the office while everybody else was working from home. So I learned a great deal from Eric. I learned a great deal about our policies, about our users, um, about how things work in the IT world. Uh, got to hear lots of fun stories about everything that he's experienced throughout his career. Um, and we've even talked cars a time or two. So uh, it's been great working with Eric and I'm sad to see him go, but I'm happy um that he's starting another adventure.
Thank you very much. Who else? Anybody else? Please come, come forward, just line up. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mr. Chairman. Eric Wondell. Wow. So when I started as a, oh, introduce myself. Bill Flavisham Tacoma Pump Handle Co- Company. No, Leo Dunn, Sheriff. Coroner. All in Montana. So this is somewhat of a roast. So when I first, uh, I did see Eric when he first started. I'd started in the reserves in nineteen eighty-four. So Eric was uh quite the reserve uh IT guy that would come to the sheriff's office and he was he was working out a lot. So this is my impression of when Eric walked in. What's the problem with the computer? So over the years, Eric has worked on computers, worked in the weight room, and always answered the phone. I always enjoyed talking to Eric and seeing all of the muscles, the short sleeves, the beach that's out away. So he was uh someone who is in a good mood and could usually figure out what was wrong with the confuser, I mean, computer, that we like to call it. So we'll miss him. And there's always uh things you could teach Eric that were just sayings that he didn't know, which I was surprised. But we did our best, being in the law enforcement world. We had names for anything, but uh, he did a, he did a good job and gonna miss him. So Eric, God bless you. I know you're older than me, so you deserve to retire. And uh, I hope you keep up. I know who your hero was. Awesome, ever impressive guy. Uh, anyway, good job.
Good morning, Art.
Good morning, Art Pembroke, Lewis and Clark County resident. I am here to speak about Eric just briefly. I had the pleasure of working with Eric for nineteen, eighteen, nineteen years. And uh, he was always dependable as long as it wasn't elk season. I remember a call or two where we had to get this message, Eric's gonna be in a little late. He's gotta go out and get his elk. So he'd shoot it and then have to take care of it. A- as noted by everyone up prior to me coming up, he's always been dedicated, persistent. I'm sure he's gonna be heavily missed. You don't find that type of work ethic around very much anymore. And most of all, I want to welcome Eric to the retired community. It is everything they say it is. It's wonderful. But prepare to be really busy. Congratulations and thank you.
Thanks, Art. Anyone else? Anyone else? Alright, well. Maybe it's our turn then. Commissioners, anything you'd like to add to the if I'm a state's commissioner?
I've, I've only been here four years, but uh he has uh bailed me out. I can't even count the number of times he's come into my office and helped me through some problems, and I, I really appreciate it. Uh, he's always got a smile on. He's always uh there to help. And he gets, gets the problem solved. And thirty years is a long time to dedicate to to one employer, and uh I think it's remarkable to do that. Uh, and the people of Lewis and Clark County are better off because of the, your dedication and your hard work. Thank you.
Absolutely.
I too have not been here as long as the old dude in the center. Um, but in the two years I've been here, I've come to recognize, man, this is a hell of a team. Everybody, and I'm sure there are a few who don't put themselves out to help the other guys. Um, I think Eric's always stepped up and done his share, and he's always got a smile on his face and in a maybe an inappropriate comment. I'm not sure. Depends on if the elevator doors closed or not. Um, anyway, thank you for your service to not only you know, the county government, to all the people here in Lewis and Clark County who they don't even know what keeps all the wheels grinding so fine. We know it's, as uh the sheriff said, the, it's the confuser. I mean, the computer. Yeah, we, we have to keep that going and I hope who is ever taking over for you has big shoes and a strong heart.
Exactly. Yes, Eric. There, I, after being here eighteen years, most numbers I still have to look up like, you know, I can't remember phone numbers, but I do remember the Help Desk number and we have had multiple occasions and good conversations over the years. And I, I appreciate it. Usually it's like, well, have you turned it off and turned it on? And it usually fixes it. Or something really dumb. And I just get him to agree to not talk about it after he leaves my office. But uh, I would just want to thank you. And I think Art hit it on the head in terms of the dedication, the years of service and the consistency and the persistence and the um being available and, and here all the time. And the years of uh experience, I, I think uh not, will not easily be replaced. And your, your dedication to this county, community and county family. This short few moments of recognition uh does not nearly enough to, to recognize those years of service. But it is something, and we thank you, and we honor you today. And we have a little uh certificate for you here, and I'm just gonna read it to you. In honor of your service, Eric Wondell, retired with distinction. After thirty years of service, we wish to express our sincere appreciation and gratitude for your thirty years of dedicated service to Lewis and Clark County and the citizens we serve. Your commitment to excellence will be remembered for years to come. We wish you happiness and good health in this new chapter of your life. On behalf of the Board of County Commissioners, Staff of Lewis and Clark County, and your fellow coworkers and friends who are all around you today, thank you and congratulations. We'd like you to come up and get this, but we want you to stop at the microphone and share anything you'd like to share. And then we might come up here and get a, get a picture and give you your certificate.
Well, thanks. Thanks for everything, you know, I know. Good ride. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Okay.
Well, that was a pretty good party.
Yeah, really nice. Alright, we hate to, but we'll move on. Sheriff Coroner, thank you for being here today. Appreciate you coming by. Thank you. Sure, yeah, thank you, Bernie. Thank you. Take care. Okay. The next item on the agenda is our consent action items. I'll turn it over to Carrie.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. There is one consent action item on the agenda today, item three A, which are the public meeting minutes for November seventh, November twelfth, November fourteenth of two thousand twenty-four. The staff recommends your approval.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, any questions about the consent action item? How about public comment on the consent action item? Any public comment? Hearing none, is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the consent, consent action item, a three A as presented. Thanks.
Second, Mr. Chair. Moved in second and to approve consent action on three A as presented. Further discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Aye, thank you. Alright, next item on the agenda is Amendment Number One to Task Order Number Fifteen between Lewis and Clark County and Great West Engineering. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. For the record, I'm Dan Carlin, County Engineer. For you today is Amendment Number One to Task Order Number Fifteen with Great West Engineering to perform final design scope of services needed to relocate both the existing above-ground storage tanks, or ASTs, and the existing magnesium chloride tanks to the west side of the Public Works complex. The amended scope of work now includes additional site visits to coordinate with potential tank vendors. It also provides bidding assistance not initially included in the task order, which includes leading a pre-bid conference and answering technical questions submitted by prospective bidders. The amendment is for time and materials not to exceed nine thousand dollars and increases the total value of Task Order Number Fifteen to thirty-six thousand dollars. It is funded through an American Rescue Plan Act grant. Staff recommends that the Board of County Commissioners approve Amendment Number One to Task Order Number Fifteen with Great West Engineering in the amount of nine thousand dollars with an updated contract end date of December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four, and authorize the chair to sign. I can answer questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Carlin. Um, just right off the bat, for those that might be watching today that um are not familiar with this project, just a little bit about um the situation there. Where the tanks are, what, what our intention is, what they do now, what our intention is, why we're moving them.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Chair Commissioners, so to start, the easier one is our magnesium chloride tanks. They are, they've exceeded their useful life and design life, so we need to replace them. So that's the, the first part of this. Uh, we got an ARPA uh grant to do so. We have identified the west side of the complex, Public Works complex for that location. So that's the first piece of it. The second piece of it is our fuel island tanks. Right now, they are, are there two concrete, separate concrete tanks. Uh, they're located less than a hundred feet from our eastern boundary, which is that property on our eastern boundary is owned by Florence Critton in uh in order for them to do the uh services that they wanna to do uh with a childcare facility and all of that. Our, our existing location for those tanks is too close to the boundary. Um, they'll need to either erect a blast wall because there's fuel tanks and they're flammable, or we need to relocate the tanks. So we worked with them. Uh, we worked with this commission, of course, and we have identified moving those tanks to the west side of our complex, which is also uh contemplated in our uh Public Works Facility Master Plan. So we're trying to knock off one step of that master plan process by doing this, and we're, we're real close, so right there.
Thank you for that explanation. Appreciate it. Questions, Commissioners, other questions, please?
I have a um a comment about an error that is screaming at me. Under compensation fee schedule in the paragraph, it states nine thousand dollars and zero cents. However, in parentheses, it says nine comma, they're missing a zero. And I know it's picky, but this is a contract. We want it right. Okay, can you fix that?
Uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Payne, absolutely. We'll get that fixed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other questions?
No.
Okay, great. Any public comment on this item? Any public comment? Any public comment? Okay. Hearing none, Commissioners, how about a motion?
Mr. Chair, I would
I would like to ask Nico. Can we fix that?
Yeah, all we have to do in our motion is have them fix that number. It's written out properly. It just
It is.
The number's written down wrong. Not a big deal, but if you'd like to weigh in, you're welcome.
Okay, so.
Alright, so if you just include that in your motion.
Alright.
Recognized error, fix, fix the error.
Mr. Chair, I would move to approve Amendment Number One to Task Order Number Fifteen between Lewis and Clark County and, and Great West Engineering as explained by uh Mr. Carlin and uh with the, the correction of the of the um typo error on uh page one and making uh the, in parentheses, a full nine thousand dollars.
Second.
Dude, seconded to approve the amendment number one to Task Order Number Fifteen as presented with the uh recognized error repair. Anything further, Commissioners? Alright, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is a contract between Lewis and Clark County and Silver Tip Sprinklers and Landscaping Inc. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. My name is Jessica Mekus, Special District's Coordinator for Lewis and Clark County. Uh, before you this morning is a contract with Silver Tip Sprinklers and Landscaping Inc. to provide snow removal and related services within various rural improvement districts throughout Lewis and Clark County. Work under this contract will be completed on an on-call basis as the need for this maintenance arises in RIDs. This maintenance was solicited through a request for qualifications, which were due on October sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. This type of solicitation was used with the intent to create a roster of qualified contractors to work through the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five winter season. Eighteen statements of qualifications or SOQs were received through this process and reviewed by Public Works Department staff um based on the information included in that SOQ. We offered uh contracts to all eighteen contractors that submitted SOQs and will work with each of these contractors to determine um their availability and then the preferred work location for each of them. Uh, because each RID is unique and road conditions are variable, snow frequency and drifting conditions vary. Uh, we try to tailor snow removal and sanding to each district's preference while prioritizing preservation of road improvements. It's important that snow be removed uh regularly from roads, especially hard surface roads, to prevent water from causing damage. Depending on the RID, property owners have very different views on when snow should be plowed. And we try to work with uh property owners in each of these districts to identify um trigger points. Uh, this, the trigger point is the amount of snow in inches that triggers a snow plowing event. Each district is assigned a value, and the contractors are given these values that they know which districts to respond to in each storm. This helps contractors plan their day and routes after a storm, and it also cuts down on mobilization time. Uh, this is um like I said, one of eighteen contracts. We've already presented fifteen contracts to you um prior. Uh, we have two this morning. Um, staff recommend approval of this contract with Silver Tip Sprinklers and Landscaping and authorize the chair to sign contract documents. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for the explanation as well. Commissioners, questions?
No.
Okay, so for those that, again, try to educate when we can, those that maybe haven't been part of our last conversations, you had a great explanation and overview. But we hire these multiple contractors for snow plowing of our RIDs all over county essentially, well, mostly in the Helena area, but all over the county. Because the the county crews are out doing the everybody roads and those kinds of things, so these contractors will do those internal roads and subdivisions and those kinds of things. Just a another brief explanation about what we're doing, just for those that might be interested.
Sure, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. So our, our county crews do um focus on those everybody roads, those main corridors that most people are using to travel. Um, they also focus on school bus routes and those, those kind of um really high priority areas. And so that leaves a lot of our neighborhood areas um without service. So when these, these areas are in rural improvement districts, uh, we set up um, like I said, a, a roster of snowplow contractors to provide these services in rural improvement districts. Uh, a lot of times, we have far less than eighteen uh contractors that are interested in plowing in rural improvement districts, so we're um we're hopeful that this will help to uh improve response times and, and get more service out there um in a more timely manner than we've been able to provide in the past. It's challenging because the contractors that, that are plowing snow are plowing snow in RIDs, they're also working on, you know, private contracts with, with larger businesses, areas that have to be plowed, you know, by a certain point in the morning. Um, I know one of our contractors does all of the Montana City Schools before they're able to come in into the Helena area. So we do our best to work with those schedules, but setting up these trigger points um with each district has made it a little bit more efficient. Um, and, and has um set expectations a little bit, a little bit better for us.
Great, thank you very much. Other questions, Commissioners? You have it covered, okay. How about public comment on this item? Any public comment? Any public comment? Alright. Hearing none, is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the contract between Lewis and Clark County and Silver Tip Sprinklers and Landscaping Incorporated as uh explained by Jessica Mekus.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Moved in second to approve the contract as presented. Further discussion?
I just would um, m- my comment is, I'm so pleased that uh the county is really trying to address the you know, the complaints. I wanna get my snow plowed right now. Well, people need to understand that theirs isn't the only road, but we have these contractors and you're working with them and you're trying to make it so that each RID is, has some, some personal attention. So I'm very impressed. Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anything else? Alright, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Okay, the next item on the agenda is another contract between Lewis and Clark County and Valley Sand and Gravel LLC. Please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, for the record, my name is Jessica Mekus, Special District's Coordinator for Lewis and Clark County. Before you this morning is a contract with Valley Sand and Gravel LLC to provide snow removal and related services within various rural improvement districts throughout Lewis and Clark County. Work under this contract will be completed on an on-call basis as the need for this maintenance arises in RIDs. Again, this maintenance was solicited through a request for qualifications with the intent to create a roster of qualified contractors to work with through the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five winter season. Again, eighteen statements of qualifications were received and reviewed by Public Works staff based on the information that was included in that SOQ. Staff recommend approval of the contract with Valley Sand and Gravel LLC and authorize the chair to sign contract documents. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, Commissioners? Any questions? How about public comment on this item? Any public comment? Any public comment? Right, hearing no public comment? Commissioners, is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I would move to approve the contract between Lewis and Clark County and Valley Sand and Gravel LLC as explained by Ms. Mekus.
Second.
Moved in second to approve the contract as presented. Further discussion? Uh, one more, right? Yeah, only one more, one left. That'll be all eighteen, and I just appreciate it, Jessica. Thank you very much. And I am excited as well to have this many, so that hopefully our as you've described, our resp- everything from response time to our getting, getting it while it's, while it's still uh fluffy versus packed down will be great. More often than not, anyway, so looking forward to that. Thank you. Alright, Commissioners, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. The next item on the agenda, the selection of a community reinvestment organization. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Ann McCauley, Director of Grants and Purchasing. Before you is a selection of a community reinvestment organization. This was an item that was tabled from last Tuesday in which we had two presenters come and propose their community reinvestment organization strategy for Lewis and Clark County. This was Have Development and Neighbor Works Montana. If the Commission chooses to select one of these organizations as the community reinvestment organization for the county, I will then draft and bring forward a resolution for this Commission's consideration at a later and bring forward a resolution for this Commission's consideration at a later date. And then that will be our last kind of step in this process for the county with respect to this community reorganization, reinvestment organization, excuse me, piece of the Montana Community Reinvestment Plan.
Thank you. Questions, Commissioners, for Ms. McCauley? So just for a recap, for those that may maybe weren't listening at our last meeting, we had a long discussion, and essentially, I'll try to recap it and you fill in the blanks here, if you will, or the gaps, but the state of Montana set aside $50 million for housing investment. And there was a GDP type of
GDP, what is it?
Gross
Domestic product.
Product.
Thank you.
Evaluation down at the counties, and our county was slated to get approximately $3.6 million of that 50 million, but that has to be matched, and we also have to partner with a community reinvestment organization. And the purpose of those dollars and the match dollars, just to discuss that a little bit more. Where will that money go? What's it going to do? How's it going to help our community?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you for that recap of House Bill 819 and the Montana Community Reinvestment Plan. So the way that it's structured is that this $3.6 million from the state will be matched one-to-one with local dollars, so approximately $7.2 million for Lewis and Clark County. We'll go towards affordable housing and specifically workforce housing for residents to get mortgage relief for purchasing a home within the, within the county. It's the way that it's set up is specifically on that, that purchase side.
Great. Thank you. That is essentially sums it up, thumbnails it. Any questions, Commissioners, at this point? Okay, and what we, we postponed a decision on this item from our last meeting to today, and we said that we would take public comment again and, or any new public comment. So if there is any further public comment, we did receive one public comment in writing from Hannah Tester from the Neighbor Works Montana, and all Commissioners have had a copy of that. Is there any other public comment? Anything else you'd like to add to the public comment conversation? Going once. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Michael O'Neill. I'm Executive Director of the Helena Housing Authority, and I just wanted to thank the Commissioners for their time and careful review of this matter. It is a, a great opportunity for the county to provide, to be part of this project. It's first time really that the state is investing state dollars in affordable homes, and we know that we need to support our local citizens in in being able to purchase a home because it has such a big impact on, on everything if families can't afford homeownership. So we want to, I'm, again, as I did at the last meeting, I would recommend to, to you all to support the Neighbor Works Montana as the organization that would best meet the needs of Lewis and Clark County. As we said, they have twenty-five-year history of providing homebuyer assistance in this county and that, and across the state, and they're really a leader. And so they have all the relationships in place, all the required licenses and certifications to not only be, make mortgage, do mortgage lending, and that's essentially what's being done here, but they also have the proper approvals to to solicit the investments needed to provide the match. They're ready to go on day one. And so I appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. Any other public comment? Good morning.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, I'm Maureen Rude, and I can answer any questions on behalf of Neighbor Works. I'm working with them on this. On a personal note, I just want to say, I worked in housing for thirty-five years, and we never had an opportunity like this to have state funds that would go to help homeownership. And especially, I think what's important about this program is that it goes up to 140% of meeting income, and those between 100 and 140% have never had a program to assist them with buying a home. And so I feel like this program really provides a unique opportunity to serve people who work really hard, but who just have not been able to get into homeownership. So I just wanted to add that from a personal perspective. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further public comment? Any further public comment? Any further public comment? Okay, Commissioners, how about discussion, comments, questions? Commissioner Payne?
Mr. Chairman and members of the audience, I, when we took this under consideration last week, Commissioner Rolfe had some, some concerns about various details in how the program works. And I believe one of them that he has some heartburn about had to do with the increase in the, what the homeowner can keep for his own increase in the property value so that it, when people accept this help, they only get a 1% increase in the
Equity.
Equity, thank you. I think, and I understand and respect Commissioner Rolfe's concerns and comments, but I think that is not within the scope of this Commission's purview. We don't have anything to say about the details of the law. We don't make the law. We are being asked to select a contractor to do the work that has to be done, you know, kind of like, like hiring the IT guys to come in and fix our computers. I'm sure we could do it, but it's probably not very efficient. So with that in mind, keeping our focus on, what is the old saying about when you're up to your elbows in alligators, it's sometimes hard to remember you were sent to drain the swamp? Okay, we're here to drain the swamp. Michael O'Neill's comments about the current status of Neighbor Works Montana and the work they have done and the activity they have participated in here in, in Lewis and Clark County. This is a local group. Many of us know the board members. We've worked with them before, and we know that if they say they will get it done, they will. And if something comes up so they don't, I'm sure they'll come and explain it. With that in mind, I would like to circle back to the, the purpose of this, and that is to consider the community reinstatement, reinvestment organization for Lewis and Clark County, and I am fully behind Neighbor Works Montana as our designated contractor. Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Rolfe, anything you'd like to?
No.
Okay.
Out of this.
Okay, and I think I stated last time, last meeting, that I feel essentially the, the same way. I think it's been pretty well documented and, and
I was trying to save your poor voice.
Thank you very much.
That's the deal, yeah.
So I support Neighbor Works Montana as well. We'll, we'll go from there. I think we've offered public comment. So Commissioners, if there is a motion, I'd like to hear it, or a motion to select a reinvestment organization. Commissioner, would you like?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we select a community reinvestment organization, specifically Neighbor Works Montana for the project as outlined by Ann McCauley.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Moving in second to select Neighbor Works Montana as our community reinvestment organization. Is there further discussion, Commissioners?
If I might just
Please, Commissioner.
You know, it's been, it's been said that, that inflation is the cruellest tax, and our inflation and, and home costs has been really tough, particularly on folks with limited means. They don't have a choice whether or not they're going to buy food today or tomorrow or wait for the, or wait for the, for the, the deal at the end of the month. And they don't have a choice on, on, it, it puts a cramp on them when the price of fuel goes up. So inflation impacts people of limited means more than maybe any other tax there is. And, and so I, I, I think it's really important that we help those folks get into a, into home, homeownership. Anytime they can, they can do that, they can then put a somewhat of a cap on their housing cost. So the rent doesn't keep going up because they have a long-term contract to buy that, buy that property. And, you know, other than what taxes might be applied or the cost of insurance, the, it kind of, it keeps their payments at where they, where they need them, or where they, as low as possible. So what we're trying to do here with, with this, what, what, what this, this organization trying to do, they're trying to help people out. I think we just need to go into it with a, with full knowledge that, that, as an example, for the, for the last four years, we've got a compounded inflation rate of close to 20%. And under this plan, the people who go in there would only be able to receive, realize about a 4% increase. So they're going to, they're giving up something to do it, but it, but they are, it's making it possible for them to get in, get into a, into a, into homeownership and, and to keep their, their housing costs down instead of being captive to whatever the market bears for rental, for, for a rent. So appreciate what your, what the, what your groups are, the group is doing. I think it's a, a step to help the, help people who are being hurt the most by inflation. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anything else? You saved my voice as well, so I won't repeat some of that and some of my comments, but I am very pleased about where we are right now, and I'm grateful that Neighbor Works Montana stepped up as one of the possible organizations. Always appreciated the work that they do, and I think this will be another successful venture. So thank you very much. That, Commissioners, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. All right, we're at that time in our meeting. Well, before I do that, just what next steps are. So we've chosen the, the CRO. Now, Ann McCauley will prepare. Well, I'll let you tell us, Ann, what the next steps are.
Yeah, Mr. Chair Commission, thank you. Yeah, per the requirements of House Bill 819, it needs to be a formal resolution for selection of our community reinvestment organization. So with the selection today, I'll draft that resolution for Neighbor Works Montana and bring it forward to you within the next week or two in a public meeting.
So Commissioners, everybody understand that we just have to now affirm our decision today with a resolution. Okay? Thank you very much. We're at that time in our meeting where we will take public comment on any item that is under the jurisdiction of the Commission, but not on today's agenda. Is there any public comment? Any public comment? Any public? Seeing, hearing no public comment. Oh, wait, we have some public comment. Mr. O'Neill? The green, green light on, and then reintroduce yourself, if you would.
Yes. Commissioners, again, Michael O'Neill from Helena Housing Authority, and I'd just take a minute to wish you all a happy Thanksgiving and appreciation of all the county staff working throughout the year, and to all of our citizens in Lewis and Clark County a happy and healthy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. Thank you. Appreciate the work that you do in our community as well. Okay. Commissioners, seeing no other public comment, any other public comment? Hearing none, appreciate it. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone. We will stand adjourned.